2020, we've got a jam-packed agenda for this afternoon. So we'll get right to it. Before we start, we always do a silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me in silent prayer. Amen. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic.
For which.
Which is safe. One nation. Indivisible.
With liberty.
And justice.
For all.
Great. All right, I'm going to move that we approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somar Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So my expectation is that we do have people on the line to comment, but my suspicion is that it's related to one of the budgets that's in front of us. So Jackie, if, or rather, let me just say, if there's anyone that wants to comment to something that is not related to an agenda item, so anything not related to either of the budgets or anything else on the agenda, raise your hand, let us know, and we will be happy to call on you. Otherwise, we'll call on people as the agenda items come forward. So Bridget, I will be relying on you to let me know if individuals are raising their hands. Hearing none, we're going to go ahead and move forward. All right, we'll go into comments and motions from the commissioners. Commissioner Somar O'Dumas.
Thank you, Madam President. My prayer today was for the village of Lincoln Heights. And it's very unfortunate that the city Cincinnati City Council has been out for a while, will not return until the middle of December. So the people of the village of Lincoln Heights go into another year of the fund range during the holidays. No date has been set by the city council. I'm hoping that when they meet December the 15th, I believe it is, maybe that will be on the agenda. So at least a date looking forward for closure could be implemented. So those are my only comments. I just will continue to be the voice, one of the voices for the village of Lincoln Heights, so it does not get lost how important it is for this to be closed. Thank you, that will end my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Parks?
I have no comments, thank you.
Thank you. I just have, I just wanted to comment related to COVID. So we, as you know, are in a dangerous place in Hamilton County. We've had four weeks in a row of around 4,000 positive cases and hospitalizations in our area. And so it is a, you know, great deal of concern when we talk about the hospitals being very crowded and staff being depleted and our, our lack of capacity there. So I just wanted to note that, so again, and I don't want to mistake it. So we've had over or close to 4,000 positive cases for the last four weeks in Hamilton County, and it's just put a great deal of strain on the hospital system and on individuals' lives. So I just want to remind everybody, we're worried about the two-week lag time from the Thanksgiving holiday. I do want to thank folks that did things a little differently this year, I think, including most of us on this call, in light of the fact that we wanted to try to keep both ourselves safe and others safe. But we're hopeful that we won't have a significant uptick here in the next week or two. That said, we're at a very, very high rate right now as it sits. So I want to just remind everybody, try to constrict your footprint of exposure so that we can try to make it through this thing in Hamilton County. So that's my only comment. We've got, as I said, quite a bit on the agenda, so let's, let's move to it. I see that Dave Schmidt is, has said something in the chat. He's with the Mill Creek Alliance. I do not know which item Dave is here for. So if, if you could indicate that, I will be happy to call on you at the appropriate time, depending on which item you want to speak to. So with that, let's go ahead and get started with the first of the budgets we're considering today.
Commissioner, if I could, just real quick, I didn't know if you wanted to do by leaves first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay.
I was so anxious to get to the budget.
I know, I know, I know you were so excited to get to the MSD budget, so.
You gotta love a good budget. No, I apologize. Administrator Ludo?
Yeah, so just two by-leave items today, obviously before we get to the budgets. The first on your agenda is by-leave item number one. This is resolution number 33, authorizing a property tax rebate for calendar year 2021. As the boards are aware, we talked about this in, in staff meeting last week before the Thanksgiving holiday. This relates to the annual allocation of, from the half-cent riverfront sales tax for property relief, property tax relief to Hamilton County homeowners. The goal, as always, is to make that as high as we possibly can have it, to get as much property tax relief as possible. But as we've discussed on numerous occasions, unfortunately, allocating the target of 30% for sales tax relief just is not feasible. It is not, is not possible within the, the model. I think we talked last week about the fact that if we did do a full 30%, that the fund would be negative by 2023. And as the board is aware, the half-cent sales tax that was passed back in 96 for this purpose was done to supplement the general fund. So the obligations in that fund are a general fund obligation, the legal obligations. So I had recommended a 6% property tax rebate for calendar year 2021. That continues to be my recommendation. We did run some scenarios that showed that if you went as high as a 10%, you start to run the, the, the balance negative in some of the out years. An 8% held flat gets you to about the same point as the 6%, but really the main reason for recommending the 6% or one of the main reasons was also to guard against a very unstable economic environment, in particular next year, and to make sure that we don't run that fund even more into the negative next year. So the recommendation remains a 6%. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any. You do have a resolution in front of you. I just want to make sure, because my screen doesn't allow, isn't allowing me to pull it up right now. I just want to make sure that regardless of what the board decides on, that we're clear on the percentage, because I think there's a couple of different attachments to the resolution. So with that, Commissioners, I might turn it to you.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. So I think probably all of us want to make a comment related to the PTR. But let's go to questions from the commissioners first of the administrator related to the recommendation and the runs that he sent out upon our request with the other amounts. So do, do either of you have any questions for Jeff before we move to comments?
Commissioner Somar Dumas, you're muted, I believe.
I have no questions. The scenarios that were presented by the administrator explained exactly the best way, I think, for the county to go. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Parks?
Jeff, all of my questions have been answered.
Okay.
So thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's then move to comments. PTR is something that we struggle with every year, because as Jeff said, we try to do as much as we can related to the rollback or the rebate. But, you know, we're limited by what the fund must do, what the liabilities are, and we do not want the fund to go negative. That would be the worst thing we could do. And so here we are, once again, trying to figure out where the balance is. You know, how, what is the percentage where we can do the most we can do for property owners and yet have a stable balance in this account so that we can meet the obligations that are required through the, the account itself? So last year, and in years prior, we have tried to go to an amount that was reasonable, but that we could build upon year after year. And that's kind of been what we've tried to do. The last thing we want to do is go, go up and then down and then up and then down, and instead have kind of a trend line where the PTR, or the rebate goes up for property owners. And so that is, it was kind of the strategy and kind of what we were trying to accomplish. And then came the pandemic, and ruined all of it for us, because the sales tax fund, you know, this fund isn't like the general fund. There are not other revenue sources going into the stadium tax fund. It's strictly sales tax. And so what happens with the economy in these next few months here is going to have an impact on the revenue. And so it's really hard to predict. And so I think, you know, you just heard Commissioner Dumas say it, the administrators said it. We are trying to be cautious, but do as much as we can. And so the, I asked the administrator, along with the support of my colleagues, to do a couple of runs so that we would be able to see what does 6% look like? What does 8% look like? What does 10% look like? And given that information, it doesn't seem to make sense to go any higher than the six that was recommended, and then hope that next year we can do more. Because, you know, this is a rebate that was promised many years ago at a percentage that was not realistic and that we simply cannot accomplish, especially given the pandemic. And so, you know, we're doing what we can here, but hopeful that next year, when we're in a better position, we can do more by way of the relief, because people are going to get the rebate. It's just a matter of degree, right, and how much we're talking about. So those are my comments related to this. So as I, I know I'm, I'm struggling, as I always do with the PTR conversations, trying to do a little bit more. I really do feel like this year, it's, you know, is not the year to be overly optimistic about the rebate and the sales tax in general. So with that, I'm, I'm, I'm in a position to support the recommendation from the administrator. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Somar O'Dumas.
You're going to turn it over to me?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I thought you had a comment.
No, my only comment is what I said earlier, but I agree with everything that you've said, that we want to do more. The opportunity does not present itself, but the 6% will allow us to, to gauge and to raise. So I absolutely agree with the 6%.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood. Commissioner Parks, any comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. You know, since I've been here, I've witnessed the prior commissioners suffering over this, really trying to give as much back as was feasible. But again, this year, given our situation, we are, we, we want to be able to give more, but we are handcuffed by reality. And so the 6% is what's reasonable. It, and anything higher than that would be irresponsible. So I agree with the 6%. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have, we had a couple of different resolutions drafted related to this item. So the resolution, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, resolution number 33 is the appropriate resolution to accept the 6% recommendation?
I believe that is correct. Again, I've lost access on my screen, so I'm going to turn it over to Jackie or John.
Jackie's shaking her head.
They're all resolution number 33.
Yeah, they all say that the number of dollar amount is different. Which one are we doing, John, 5 million?
It's the 5 million is the 6%. Yes.
Throw the others out.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure we're approving of the correct resolution here. So is it enough then, John, for me to, for all number 33? Can we discard the other two options? And I will reference the 6% by way of the motion?
I would defer to Jackie on that. I would reference 5 million dollars, which is what's in the resolution.
Okay. Okay, very good. All right, in that case, I'm going to move that we approve of resolution number 33, authorizing a property tax rebate for calendar year 2021. The resolution I'm referring to is the one where the rebate is 5 million dollars.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somar Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By-leave, item, item number two is resolution number 34. The Ohio revised code allows for the, when there's a newly elected sheriff, for that sheriff-elect to, they must attend a specific state-required training, and it allows the, the sheriff-elect to be compensated at the rate of the sheriff in order to attend that training. This resolution allows, authorizes and allocates those dollars for compensation to the sheriff-elect for time attending that training. John, anything additional that you want to add there?
No, I think that does it.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioners, questions or comments?
I have no questions.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move that we approve of the resolution number 34, basic training compensation for the sheriff-elect.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somar Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. Jeff, do you have any other by-leaves?
That ends my by-leave, Commissioners.
All right, now, on to the budgets. So the first budget we've got is the MSD 2021 Operating and Capital Improvement Program budget. This is the first of two hearings. We're going to have this hearing today. We will have another one next week at our Thursday meeting. So just to kind of lay the groundwork there, we have gotten a couple of communications related to this. And Jackie, thank you for passing along the email from Shannon, I think it's Dagger, regarding the SBU program. She's a resident of Hyde Park, and so thank you for providing that. We'll enter that for the record. Commissioners, has anyone else received any communications related to this budget?
I'm sorry.
I was asking the other two commissioners if they've received any communications related to this budget, so we can offer them for the record?
I have not.
I have not, thank you.
All right, very good. Sounds like we're up to speed then. All right, so we will hear from Diana Christie. Oh, and, and so on your screen right now, you can see how we are going to try to manage public comments. So online participants, your camera is currently off and you are muted. Raise your hand at the bottom of the screen, and then you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. We will try to hold folks' comments to our standard two minutes. We'll go over a little bit if you've got just a little bit more than that to say. And I think that is what is reflected here on the screen. So with that, let's move to, I assume, Diana Christie, the administrator at MSD for the presentation.
And Madam President, real quick, it looked like Clerk Paniotto was trying to weigh in on something real quick.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to note, not only did we get the Shannon Dagger, but we also got a Tom Croft communication and a, at the very last minute, Laura Smith. And they are all related to sewer-related issues.
Okay, Jackie, I'm going to ask you to please provide all three then to each of us so that we've got those for our own benefit, and then we'll introduce those for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, Diana.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here today. I do want to make sure I recognize, I have Mary Lynn Loder, Deputy Director and Chief Operating Officer, as well as Ryan Welsh, Deputy Director and Chief Engineer for MSD. Jack Brennan Camp may be on, but I'm having trouble seeing him. But that's, you know, in case we need to address questions. And as you can see, we are sharing our presentation, and as Mary Lynn is getting that up and running for me. I just want to introduce the subject today, of course, is MSD's 2021 Operating and Capital Budget Requests. We have shared our budget recommendations. They are pretty lengthy books, and I know the commissioners have received those. We did post notice of these public hearings for the public on, in the Inquirer, and they've been posted on our website and shared by email with a large number of our stakeholders. And the budget books have been available on our website. We posted the updated books in November, I believe on November 18th. I mean, we had the drafts online after they were shared with the county in August. Because they are, you know, there is a lot in these, there's a lot of detail. What we are going to present today are, you know, just the highlights and the overall request and the need for some increases. So just wanted to reference the book a few times here and there, but since we're not in person, that, we thought this would be the easier way to do it today. So here we have our agenda. So again, just want to quickly, an opportunity to acknowledge some highlights of 2020, which, as we all know, has been a pretty tough year. And then we're going to share our revenue projections and our revenue that we've seen in 2020. And then I'll get into the, the 2021 Operating Budget Request, which is broken down there by the categories of expenditures. And then finally, we will discuss the Capital Improvement Program, which, as you know, is a five-year planning budget. Jump to the next slide. Again, just quickly, there's a lot of serious stuff to discuss here. But I wanted to acknowledge, you know, one, one highlight really of 2020 was we went viral, and we went viral for this very, I guess, a feel-good story in the midst of the early stages of the pandemic, when I think people were looking for something to make them smile. But the reality is, this is one of our MSD employees who, you know, just answered the call of a customer who had an issue with the sewer, and it turned out that they had lost their guinea pig, their pet guinea pig, had managed to get into the sewer. And there you see our MSD employee safely rescuing Snowball and just some of, some of the headlines that we saw locally, and then actually, it, you know, like I said, went viral, and there was some national recognition of this story. But this really just emphasizes who MSD is, who our employees are, and their passion for our community and for the essential services we provide for public health and the environment. Go to the next slide. But to get to the, I guess, the more standard operational highlights from MSD, want to just set the stage of our, of our operations and our service area, of course. The small box to the top right just shows Hamilton County and, and where our nine treatment plants are located. In addition to the, and I know that's a little small to read, but this is provided in the budget book as well, and this just shows you that are served by MSD. Those areas in red that are not served by MSD, as well as the location of our, of our treatment plants. The millions of gallons of waste treated per day at our nine treatment plants, as you can see, the Mill Creek plant, which is where I'm sitting today in the office building, of course, is our largest. And, you know, the, the other, the second largest plant is Little Miami, which is on the east side. But you can see Mill Creek really does, is just much larger than any of the other plants that we have in our, in our service area and treats the largest amount of our community's wastewater. I did also want to share that while 2020 year-to-date is slightly higher than 2019, we've really invested a lot in odor control and odor management, and you can see the results there. Over the years, the, the bar graph shows the Mill Creek odor complaints, and then the, the line above shows all the other facilities. So we are still in slight uptick this year, but we are still significantly down and continuing to invest in trend inward with odor complaints from our facilities. Lastly, on this slide, just wanted to share, you know, the numbers in terms of the solids we manage and the method of disposal of the solids that are generated from our treatment process. It's still a significant cost and operating expense we'll discuss later in the presentation. The lack of additional, the lack of solids handling on the east side and additional costs that we are experiencing due to the hauling of waste. So we can go to the next slide there. And again, on, in the budget book, we, this year, we included a couple pages. I believe this is page six and seven of the book, because it's really important, again, when we talk about the personnel dollar request here in a few slides, to know who we're talking about. And we're talking about employees who are frontline employees, if you will. We've heard a lot about frontline workers this year. And our frontline workers, obviously, these pictures are taken before COVID because they're not masked up, but, you know, they've been out there in the community every day, every night, working at our plants and keeping things running because our services cannot stop. And these individuals, you know, are highly trained and skilled professionals that, you know, don't receive the kudos and the accolades all that often. So highlighted here are just a few of the comments we received. And, you know, I really, you know, I encourage you all to read these because you may only hear the complaints, unfortunately. But we do get customers who took time after they were in a very stressful situation to recognize, as you can see there, that kindness and respect shown by our employees wanted us to know, they wanted the supervisors to know that they, you know, really provided excellent and outstanding customer service. This really is not unique. We could pull these, a lot more of these, especially when it comes to just the small calls and comments. These were some of the more lengthy, detailed notes. So again, just want to make sure that goes, gets noticed and thank our employees for the work they do. This slide here, we, we have several pages in the budget book talking about the service charges, the sewer service charges and our revenue and the trends we're seeing in our revenue. So this is really a snapshot of what we provided. But the, the key things here that I wanted to, you know, really bring to the forefront as we talk about our budget, of course, first, just generally that, you know, our operating budget is funded entirely from our sewer rates. And these sewer, the sewer charges and the, the revenue that MSD brings in can only be used for the MSD services and the sewer services. So looking at our revenue over the last, comparing our revenue in 2020 to the actuals in 2019, we, we do unfortunately see a slight decline because, you know, primarily related to COVID. We talked about this when we talked about the 2020 budget. But you can see, again, you know, that there is a, an overall decline of three and about three and a half percent is what we're anticipating from 2020 to 2019. And just to go through quickly what our revenue categories are. So as you see in the pie chart, the largest amount of our revenue, over 92%, is from our sewer service charges. And these are our, this is our usage charge, is from all of our customers. That includes residential, multifamily, commercial, for, you know, their connection, their, their usage of, of water and therefore the wastewater that we receive from those customers. Next, we have our sewer surcharges, and this is collected from our commercial industrial customers that have a high-strength waste. So going back to the table, we did have a bit of a decline in these sewer surcharges this year, where we know our commercial and industrial customers have been harder hit than, you know, of course, our residential customers. Cases, we're seeing higher usage, but it's not enough to offset the impact to our commercial industrial. The also brings in revenue from the sale of permits, inspections, interest income, and things like that. So that's all detailed in that chart there. We can go to the next slide. And just quickly, a couple other items that were mentioned in the budget recommendation this year. We've talked previously about revising our haul waste fee. This is something, you know, we recently discussed again with the county administration and believe that we really need to advance this in the next several months and have it be something that we can put in place sooner than later. This is really, right now, the, regardless of the strength of the waste, there is a uniform fee that is applied to all waste that's called to our facilities. Addressing this by a more tiered rate structure that is more tied to the cost of service is a way to potentially generate additional revenue. And it also, not only is it beneficial and consistent with our existing facilities, it really is something that we need to do to. it really is something that we need to do to achieve the full benefits of our future digester solids facility on the east side of Little Miami. Surface fee, I know that you all are familiar with this. We've been working collaboration with the county and we hope that 2021 is when, you know, we'll have a recommendation for this enhanced rep, enhanced structure for wet weather. Okay, so, thank you. Here we have our operating budget request for 2021. And we break this out in a lot of detail in several different ways in the budget book. But this is the, the overall request by personnel, non-personnel, and the other categories. As you can see, the, a very large category, a very large portion of our budget every year is our debt payment. So that's about 30, 38%, personnel 27%, non-personnel 30%, and then we've got SBU. Just to break down the numbers, and, and we have it by division, which I will not go through. The 21 personnel request is 61.9 million. The non-personnel is 60.2 million. The other, which is our other non-personnel categories, is just under 6 million. The SBU request is 10.9 million this year, along with our debt payment of 83.5 million for a grand total 2021 operating budget request of 222,787,843 dollars. I did not include the full charts of the comparison of this request over the approved 2020 budget. But as you can see, it is a 5.1 million increase, which is about 2.3%. The down in comparison there is on page 22 of the operating budget book. And I will get into the details of the increases and the requests. First, let me try and on the right page. The personnel budget. So this year, we're requesting 61, almost 62 million dollars. This is a three and a half percent increase over the 22 approved, 2020 approved budget, which is based on the direction that we received from the county earlier this year that really didn't want to see an increase above three and a half percent for this year's budget. And what we've shown is that, you know, with our existing staffing levels, absent vacancies, which I will get into, we have increases that are, are known and that we cannot, you know, we, we cannot avoid. And those have to do with healthcare, cost of living adjustments, merit increases for employees and our lump sum retirement payouts as we have individuals retire. So if you add those up, those are actually 3.22 million. And this personnel increase for 2021 is 3.1. We wanted to stick with the board's target here. But we also are recognizing that in 2020, every year, we have a lot of vacancies. I mean, we never have everyone, every position filled at one time. So there's always fluctuation, people retiring, people being terminated, transferring out. You know, many of those situations are typical in a given year. But this year was unlike any other. Not only did we have vacancies going into the year, we then had, when COVID hit, the city put in place a hiring freeze for a period of time. And so we were really unable to feed with filling positions at the pace that we typically would. So many of the vacancies remained longer than typical. And, and we're going into 2021 now. With addition to the existing vacancies, we also have a significant number of employees who have taken an early retirement incentive program. In fact, we have 49. So coupled with those retirements and other vacancies, we've had well over 75 MSD staff leave in 2020. So as much as we would like to say we can fill all those positions, you know, in the first month of 2021, we, we know that's not going to happen. And we continue to have people leave MSD. So that's the reason that we're here today, asking for 1.9 million, which is just a three and a half percent increase. Because we know that vacancies, you know, will be a credit, if you will, to our personnel budget in 2021. And that was a lot on that, but that sums up the personnel request. So now I will turn to the non-personnel. So overall, again, the non-personnel request of 6 million, and that is excluding our sewer backup program, and of course, the debt, is an increase over the 2020 budget of about 6.6 million. You know, this increase is a little higher than we just discussed for the personnel budget. But what I want to talk about here in the next few slides is, is why these, these increases are unavoidable and necessary for us to continue to provide the services that the community depends on from MSD. So they are attributed to things like employee safety initiatives, assessments, technology upgrades, treatment chemicals, hauling and disposal, and our aging equipment and fleet. So in the budget book, we laid this out and we laid out the cost increases and new initiatives by division. So at MSD, we have our Office of the Director, our Wastewater Treatment Division, Wastewater Collection. But for purposes of simplifying this for today, I'm trying to just highlight the most critical and largest increases that make up that, that increase over 2020. Okay, so first, employee safety initiatives. A really, really important one is lockout-tagout and energy control procedures, or ECPs. MSD employees work on electrical equipment, including high voltage equipment, that has very important safety measures that are needed to protect our employees. And unfortunately, you may recall, the city of Cincinnati had an employee who lost his life, actually. And, and it was due to a lack of proper safety protocols when working on this kind of electrical equipment. And therefore, you know, the city and MSD have deemed this an unacceptable risk. We have made a lot of progress and done a lot of work to improve our electrical work, safety equipment, and our safety procedures. This is an essential need really for employees to, to really develop more sophisticated safety resources and tools that we can use in many of our, our work practices. So this impacts, really, it's a lot of our employees that do work on electrical equipment. Of course, the high voltage is, is subset of that that is even more critical. So as you can see, that's an, that's an increase in our budget. We've put there 750,000. We, we actually initially had larger, larger budget for this. And that's about as minimal as we can get going into 2021. The other important safety initiative has to do, it's similar, it has to do with our personal protective equipment. And many of our employees are exposed to electric equipment and arc flash, and we need to upgrade their uniforms. This is really to industry standards, to have flame-resistant uniforms. Also identified additional needs for enhanced PPE for many of our employees. So that all makes up funding request that you see there. Go to the next slide, okay? Another increase in our budget is attributed to planned sewer condition assessment and cleaning. As you've heard about this a couple of times this year, when we've talked about funding, obviously. So as you can see, almost half of MSD's condition collection system has not been assessed. And by not assessing our sewers, knowing the condition of these assets and knowing where the high-risk sewers are, we are at risk of emergencies. And any of the reactive emergency work is always expensive. And it also has consequences to our customers, to businesses and homes and traffic in terms of street closures for sinkholes and other significant safety risks that occur when we are not able to keep up with, with the repair and rehabilitation of our sewers. So completing condition assessments is a very high priority for MSD. And, and what we're asking for is an additional $1 million. If this is funded in 2021 and, and future years, we've determined that we can complete the, all of the condition assessments for our extreme, high and medium-risk sewers in five years. And, and that would be really, I think, put us where we need to be to, to know the condition of the sewers and know where we need to prioritize our repair rehab needs based on those consequences of failure, as I mentioned. That, yeah, go on to the next slide. Thank you. So another category where we are seeing increases is technology. And first, I want to talk briefly about our website. So MSD's website is outdated. It's not upgraded when other city websites were updated. And because of that, it's a very frustrating user experience. And, and we know that we're not even, many customers are not even able to access our website because it's not mobile-friendly. And a lot of people today don't have PCs. They're using their, their phones for all their, you know, for all their needs, including how to contact MSD in an emergency or, you know, just with any kind of a customer request. And unfortunately, it's very hard to find anything because it's not mobile-friendly. That's just really, you know, probably one of the, the peeves of mine. But really, there's a lot more to our website because it's so outdated. That keeps us from being able to provide more real-time reporting and data and be more transparent and interactive with our customers and have it be a place where people can get information about what we're doing in our community. In addition to, you know, the SBU program, being able to fully utilize that online, our commercial and industrial account information, there's, there's so much more that I think our customer service, our customers have come to expect from, you know, their utility providers. And MSD is just not there. So this is a fairly modest, in my view, cost for something that will bring us to where we need to be and improve our ability to, to provide customer service. The goal here is to have this completed in less than a year, just maybe six or so. So we, we think we could see benefits very quickly and we're prepared to advance that initiative. The second item here for technology upgrades is really a compilation of, of many software upgrades. So it's, it's part of our budget that we would have software upgrades and, and technology needs. But there are a few really larger needs or essential upgrades that we can't put off and we can't do without. One being Maximo, which is really the basis for all of MSD's treatment plant maintenance work, how we track and prepare work orders for keeping our equipment running, keeping our plants running smoothly. The Maximo upgrade has been deferred and it's, that software is really in need of this upgrade or, or our entire, all of the investment we put into, to using this, I guess, platform, if you will, would be lost if we don't get that upgrade done. EnviroSuite is software that is used for odor control, is able to detect odors before they leave the site. And we've seen a lot of success with that, and that's in need of an upgrade. Cronos is our HR software that's needed for timekeeping. And it's really just a necessity for our personnel. E-Builder is related to our capital program. And this is also tied to that real-time reporting on all of our project management work and project delivery. This would provide access and transparency for the county as well. And then cybersecurity. Cybersecurity is, there's, there's several different needs going into 2021. But I just want to share that, you know, I know that the county probably has this in other areas as well. And, you know, the risk of threat of cybersecurity is, is extremely high for municipalities and utilities. Financial, it's, you know, it's our, our ability to provide our services. And we have to keep up with that today. All of our business services and our operations really depend on our technology and these systems working together and continuing to function. So again, it's not only, you know, being vulnerable to hackers. It's, it's just the ability to keep our data in communication. And, and I shared this picture on here because, you know, it's, I know it's a little small on this screen, but it's very complicated technical data that is being used 24/7 to operate our treatment plants. And, and those guys in there know what they're looking at and can, you know, open up something and, and know exactly what's wrong in the plant if they have to, you know, if there's an issue. So we cannot be at risk of, you know, major systems going down. I'm in last, beyond here, upgrades to our document management system. Again, related to, in, in large part related to our capital program and in our ability to manage the volumes of records that we have and make them more easily retrievable. Okay, so with that, the next slide. So the next area where we're seeing increases is treatment chemicals. First, a large increase for, which is one and a half million, is really, it's, this is related to more stringent permit limits for our Mill Creek plant here. Unfortunately, you know, with this new permit limit, we've already seen, as you can see, six violations this year, which is just not acceptable. And, and we need to do supplemental disinfection for the time being to address this more stringent permit requirement. So that's PAA, which is an abbreviation for the, the chemical there. And I'm going to butcher it if I try to say it. So, but, but we've determined that's the most cost-effective treatment. Although really, what, what is likely here in the long term is a capital project to improve our treatment so that we can meet these permit limits cost-effectively in the future. The other two on here, so chlorine disinfection, the chlorine costs are increasing. We use a lot of chlorine for supplemental disinfection as well. And then we have seen increases in the odor control chemical we use, which is fair chlorine. That is used at two of our plants, in particular, Mill Creek and Little Miami, where we have invested in odor control initiatives. So it is something we use a lot of. It, it is successful, but those costs are increasing. Okay, so the operating, I'm sorry, so the, the hauling disposal and utilities. This chart here, this pie chart shows you our wastewater treatment budget breakdown. So just for our treatment division, you can see, you know, where our costs really are going. The largest over, almost a third, is utilities. So that's to run the treatment plants. We, we're a big utility user. We're a big energy user. The next largest is the disposal, cleaning, and waste services. So what we, what we shared in our, our budget recommendation and what we're asking for is an increase in 1.5 million. This is because the, the costs of hauling and disposal are up, are hauling from most of our plants. And we are disposing of our waste at the landfill. And those costs are increasing. This is another area where, you know, This is another area where, you know, we know that we have a capital project that is in need of advancing, and that's the Little Miami solids facility to, you know, to help address these costs that will likely continue to increase disposal costs. Utilities, not only are we now having a new plant online full-time, that's Fort Scott. We also are just seeing electrical costs increases at some of our facilities. And, you know, this is the largest part of our treatment budget. Okay, trying to hurry up. And the, the last category on the non-personnel increases is our office technology equipment allowance, or OTEA, and our fleet. So essentially, you know, this is replacement costs for equipment and, and our fleet. For the OTEA budget, we've really identified every year much more than we are able to improve in a budget. So again, this year, you know, all of our divisions have identified the various needs that they have for lifecycle replacements. And these are things like our network, network switches. There's a lot of IT stuff. Our SCADA server replacement program. We also have lab equipment that needs to be replaced and rehabbed. We have sewer cameras, we have air compressors, maintenance shop equipment. All of these things are part of our OTEA budget. And each division at MSD requests, you know, this based on lifecycle. And then we've been managing it by deferring, deferring things when we, you know, get to our budget max. So again, we are only requesting 1.5 or just over 1.5 million despite identifying needs much greater. And that is all detailed in the budget book. The fleet replacement request, in particular for 2021, is 1.77 million. And again, we've, we've, over the last few years, this is an area where, you know, the, the budget has been approved at less than what we've identified as our need. MSD's fleet, I mean, we have a significant, significant size fleet. We've got trucks like you see in the picture that are really being used beyond their useful life. And we're, you know, we're spending more at this point on maintenance and repairs than replacement, than the, than the value of the, the equipment. So we have a fairly detailed description in the budget book of all of our equipment and the replacement needs. Each year, we develop that with those criteria as outlined. We did provide additional supporting data for our fleet requests to the county. That's in addition to what's in the budget book. But again, continuing to defer here, you know, really is not a cost savings for us in the long run. We rely on this equipment to meet the needs of our customers and they reach their useful life. Okay, so the sewer backup program. We had been keeping steady with the budget for the sewer backup program. And as you can see, this year, we're requesting just under 11 million. This is to cover the three main components of the sewer backup program is the rapid response and cleaning. And then we have damage claims that are submitted for properties that have experienced sewer backups and had damage. And then we have the prevention program, which is our, our program where homes, once they have two or more backups in five years, are eligible for the prevention program. And we work with homeowners to, to design and install solutions to prevent future backups. This year, we are seeking a million dollars for a new program. And this really would be to allow us to, to study and do some real, I guess, innovative work so that we are starting to address SBU prevention more proactively. I'm going to mention something we talked about doing on the capital side. But here, this is really, say, what, how can we look at these areas where we, you know, we may not, customers may not be eligible for the prevention program. But rather than wait until they have another sewer backup and incur more costs for cleaning and damages, what can we do to perhaps incentivize private owners to do something to prevent, to install a prevention device on their own? This is something that, you know, we really would like to work on in 2021 in collaboration with the county. And perhaps it would be ripe for discussion early in the new year. I also shared some of our, our program stats. And I need to hide my thumbnail because I can't, there we go. I couldn't see the numbers. So I just wanted to do a quick snapshot. And this is something we can probably dig in a little more before the next hearing. But since the SBU program was implemented in 2004, we have spent $132 million. We have served over 10,000 properties, as you can see. So this, these are properties that have, you know, been eligible for either cleaning or perhaps claims or the prevention program. So that's the overall total of properties that have received SBU services from MSD. And then below that is the breakdown of the sewer backup prevention program. So over 1,000 homes have been, have received a, you know, protection through the SBUPP. The total cost there is 30, is over 32 million. And the average cost per home is about 45,000. So these, you know, as we look at these numbers and we look at that cost, and yet, you know, we're just over 1,000 properties, we don't feel that we are, that the existing prevention program is really the best approach going forward. We're still seeing really high costs and we're just not able to reach everyone with a solution. So that is the reason we want to work in a, in a new initiative in the pilot program that we've suggested. And we'd like to dedicate some of the SBU dollars to that in 2021. So just to wrap up the operating budget. Again, factoring in personnel, non-personnel, and the debt service payment, we are looking at a 2.34% increase over our 2020 budget. The increases to personnel are needed to cover, you know, just the standard adjustments for our existing personnel. And the increases to non-personnel, we feel are, you know, are essential for our cleaning of our sewers, for the chemicals and utility costs needed to operate our facilities and meet our permit requirements. These additional employee safety initiatives, you know, in our view, are essential. And it's, you know, really unacceptable to not implement those. And of course, the fleet replacements, as we said, that we rely on every day to perform our work. Knowing that, you know, there are many other items and requests we would like to make. You know, we, we recognize the constraints of our rate payers and we work very hard all year long, as we did in 2020, to manage our budget within the approved amount that we have. So with that, let me move to capital, unless you want to pause.
Yeah, let's, let's pause. Let's, so, yeah, commissioners, let's, let's do this in two separate sections. One for the operating, one for the capital. So I just have a couple of questions, Diane, they're pretty simple. I mean, this is the first hearing, so I'll digest the information and likely have questions next week. But just off the top of my head, I'm wondering if you could provide just a little bit more information related to two things. One is, you talked about the vacancies related to COVID, related to retirements, the impact being on the current workforce and the upcoming budget. I would like to just get a, dig in just a little bit as to what dollar amounts we're talking about related to vacancies so that we can understand its impact related to the personnel budget. So if you could just provide that at the next hearing, just, just some context for the vacancies, the amount of money that's saved because those have not been filled, and what impact that had on the current budget and the future budget. And then the second item, you talked about the safety of the personnel and said that you, we've gone as low as we can. That doesn't give me a lot of comfort when I, when I hear that related to safety. And so I'm wondering if, if there were to be a request at what you're comfortable with, you know, I, what is that number? You know, if it's not what you've asked for related to this budget, what is a certain comfort level that we get related to employee safety? So I'd like to dig in a little bit more on that one. So just two things for next week. I don't want to go into any, any detail today. And then commissioners, I'll turn it over to you to ask questions related to the operating budget before we proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few questions. You mentioned earlier about the enhanced structure of the impervious fee and trying to have that structure ready by May the 1st, 2021. Just wondering, since it generates revenue, is there any way to move that back and instead of May, maybe make it March? So the revenues can start to be generated in a more structural form. That's, that's just a comment, Diana. And then I also wanted to talk about personally on the fact that you were saying there are a few that retired. It's my assumption that the ones that retired were probably pretty highly paid. They've been there a while. So in addition to what Madam President was saying, if you can add on those salaries that were lost, even though I know you have to provide retirement and things like that, but what was that amount when those people retired? And just a general comment, well, one other comment as it relates to non-personnel. The utility cost range was between 100,000 to 300,000 that you might see an increase. So my question, and you don't have to answer it now, but are we getting more machinery that may increase that, you know, it's a big gap, 100 to 300,000 projected? But are we adding new machinery? I know the rates may go up, but it has to be a little bit more than that. And why are we going from 100 to 300,000? I know that's only a projection. And then in general, I think my comment is that there are certainly things we essentially have to offer to our residents. But I'd like to know, even though 2.34 increase of funding is all good, it's not 5%. My question is, what items are essential for MSD to function? And what items are, as I perceive somewhat, a wish list? You know, where you just kind of throw stuff in and see if it can come out and be funded? And I'm not saying you guys did that, I know you investigated before you put it in. But what items, if we looked at another budget from you guys, what can you not do without? And what things are, like you, you talked about that new pilot program for $1 million. Can we do that now or can we stagger it to the following year? I'm not, I'm not pinpointing that program. But if you could just take a look at what you could eliminate if you had to. Okay, that's all I have, Madam President.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Parks?
There we go. Yeah, my, my question was related to safety. And I was concerned that that number was kind of lowballed. So I think that Commissioner Dreehouse addressed that. And Diana, you also, you talked about incentivizing, was it homeowners? Can, can you explain to me what you mean? When, when you talked about incentives?
Yes, I can explain that quickly. So yes, you're referring to, I was commenting about the proposed, you know, development of, or changes under the SBU program. So I, you know, it's tough, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I didn't explain very well the map here. So we know, based on, you know, what we've seen over the years, where we have areas that have a high capacity or have a high frequency of sewer backups and, and whether they're occurring in, you know, when we have these really big storms, we see a lot of sewer backups. But when we're having storms that aren't so large, but yet we're, we're getting sewer backups, you know, those are, those are perhaps something where we'd like to look at these locations and determine if there is, you know, more work that could be done preventatively versus, you know, wait until they meet the terms of the consent decree. So there's some legal issues in terms of incentivizing property owners. And it's why we haven't spelled out all the criteria here because I think it, it needs a little bit more research. But incentivizing property owners to do something would be, you know, whether it's a rebate or, you know, there's some level of shared, you know, cost sharing to have in these areas where we can anticipate that they are going to back up and then ultimately be eligible for the prevention program, which is costly. Could they do that proactively? Or, you know, do some work proactively to avoid, you know, getting to that point? And, and save costs in the long run? So, so that's, that's what we're talking about here on the operating. Did we, we have something similarly related in the capital? Because, well, it might not look like a lot. This, this is pretty new and sophisticated data plotting and tracking that we haven't been able to do until recently using our SBU data overlaid with GIS data to generate these heat maps, if you will. And it tells us a lot when we dig in. And we want to use what we're, what we're now kind of able to see to do two different things. And one is here with respect to the prevention program and the other is on the capital side with, with respect to some larger initiatives.
I, I see. Yeah, that's, that's cool. And it would be smart to utilize that. Just one last thing, the average cost that we bear per household in the SBU programs, $45,000 per home is, is the average.
Let me just clarify. So that's the average for homes that we are, that have been eligible and that we then install a protection device. And it's more than just usually one backflow valve. It's a, you know, typically the construction, it might have pumps and, you know, a pump or, or something else. So that's the cost to design and install those solutions on homes.
Okay, so Diana, so, so that is not the average cost of, of, of each home that participates in the SBU?
No, it's, it's, it's not. And this is something probably for the next hearing, we might be able to provide a little bit more. We, we didn't have, as it was mentioned the other day, you know, right. It's not, that doesn't, that has nothing to do with cost of claims on average, for example.
Okay, yeah.
Or costs that we spend on the cleaning.
I was, I was shocked.
Yeah.
25 grand, really? Okay, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to the capital.
Okay, this is a little bit shorter, hopefully, I think. So while there is a lot to discuss, I think for purposes of this public hearing today, we wanted to just, you know, present the overview of our, our capital improvement program and, and take questions. Again, you know, we share, we shared our, our book and there is a lot of detail and information in that on all the various projects that it would not be respectful of everybody's time to go through those today. So our capital improvement program, as you all know, is a five-year planning budget, a five-year planning tool. But you will be considering funding appropriation and taking action on 2021 only. So the, the years 2022 and 2025 are for planning. So the years 2022 and 2025 are for planning. And just generally speaking, the way the capital funding appropriation works is for 2021 is it allows MSD to proceed with engineering, planning and design of various projects with construction in the case of some allowances, but primarily funding for construction projects while they're listed in the CIP. And that is not appropriate, those funds are not appropriated until detailed plans and specifications are presented by MSD and approved by the board on a per-project basis. The approvals, as you know, come throughout the year. The CIP request here, as shown, we did provide the last two years, the approved budget for comparison purposes. As you can see, we have broken the overall request for 2021, which is 131.2 million, down into three categories. These categories, the WIP is the Wet Weather Improvement Plan or our Consent Decree Projects. And for 2021, we are requesting 52.3 million. The asset management is our projects to renew, replace or enhance existing infrastructure. And then the projects classified as other include program contingency and labor for MSD staff working on the capital program and in some allowances. So the note there, because when you compare across the years, you'll see that 2019 other was much smaller. And that's because we really broke that out differently previously and other didn't include program contingency. And we just this year started this labor allowance rather than incorporating those costs on a project-by-project basis. So that changed it for comparison purposes. But I think the key here is that in 2021, while we have a slight increase over our 2020 approved budget, we are actually still lower than what was approved in 2019. And overall, really, you know, within, in a consistent funding level. Each of these years, you know, we have had the difficulty of not having our Phase Two Consent Decree work approved or, you know, that schedule finalized. So the WIP spending, you know, is, in this year, it's known, but as you look in the out-years, it's a little more uncertain. I also just quickly wanted to, as we talked about earlier, you know, MSD's revenue also funds our capital program. But the capital financing is made up of, you know, the cash surplus that we've had from the operating revenue, the sale of revenue bonds, is the connection fees that we receive annually. Those go to funding capital projects, of course, net operating revenues, and then some interest earnings from our construction fund. So that's generally how our capital program is funded. You know, all of this source, though, is, you know, is MSD Sewer District Restricted Financing.
Diana?
Yes.
Can I stop you? I fear I have a goofy question. So in the other category, you said that that included the labor for these other projects? Did I hear that clearly?
So what it includes is, we've always, so our MSD staff that work on the capital projects, the engineers and support staff that work on capital projects, we do charge a portion of their time to the projects. It can be a capitalized expense per, you know, financing guidelines and policies that are, you know, industry standard and accepted. But we changed the way we did that. So previously, when you had a project budget, it include, it would include your design, you know, your right-of-way acquisition, your construction costs. It would also have a labor line item in that project cost.
Okay, so it doesn't have?
And now it doesn't. We pulled it out of the projects because it's difficult really to determine in advance how much, you know, what that labor would be charged to a project because of the time that's spent over years. So instead, we are doing this more on a formulaic basis, which again, you know, there's various ways to do this. And so it's based on the total cost of the capital program that we will, and the labor allowance in 2020 was 5 million and for 2021, we're requesting 5 and 1/2 million. So that means that that much of our labor will be charged to the allowance. And then at the end of the year, it is prorated or, I guess, dispersed on the projects that were under construction that year, just based on like a formula, predetermined formula. So it's prorated, you know, depending on the cost of the capital program. It's just more of an accounting change.
I see. Okay, so that's a goofy after all.
No, not at all. I think that was a great question. And I want to kind of just ask in addition to that, because I was thinking the same thing. So the labor allowance, are they contractors primarily? Or are they personnel that would be listed in our personnel budget and over budget?
Yeah, so this is definitely just for our personnel. The labor contractors are on a per-project basis. They are in the project budget. So whether they're, you know, professional services or, you know, our construction workers or engineers.
So if I was working on a project, when I got paid or whatever, then my money would come from, of course, the operating budget personnel costs that you're paying me. And then if I worked on a capital project, you would pay that not separately, but from a different fund.
That's right. So we're paying a portion of those salaries, those personnel costs with this capital allowance. So.
So it could be the same people then, basically?
Yeah, so our engineers will have, you know, I don't have the personnel total. What that division has a personnel budget of, you know, X million. And we, you know, we've taken a portion of it out of the operating budget and put it in the capital budget.
Interesting. Okay, thanks.
Okay, if there are no more questions. Again, I really just wanted to give a high-level overview today of our CIP requests because I know that there's public comments and there's a lot in the book that people may have questions about that I'd like to be able to address rather than go through the whole thing. But let me just start with consent decree projects. So of course, you know, we have these different categories in our budget. And just like other years, we do have consent decree projects. And generally speaking, you know, in order to meet our prior obligations, you know, even without a Phase Two, the capital budget includes WIP Phase One post-construction monitoring. So these are projects that have been constructed and we have work that we have to do to show that they are meeting the goals of the consent decree. And then we still have projects that are to be completed under what is known as the bridge schedule. These were the projects that were approved to bridge the gap between Phase One and Phase Two. And finally, you know, MSD, we are seeking to implement the county's Phase Two A proposal. And we've been providing financial and engineering data to support the county plan in those ongoing negotiations. But, you know, many of the project, or the schedule itself has not been finalized and approved. And therefore, we have requested, you know, certain projects that all parties agree are priorities for the Phase Two A and that should advance, you know, regardless of what the final approved plan is. So just wanted to be clear that, you know, we do have consent decree projects in the CIP, you know, that stem from each of those areas. One new item that I've mentioned here is the East Side SBU mitigation study. This is something that, similar to what I was talking about before, you know, the sewer backup problems aren't going to go away on their own. And existing WIP projects do not address all of these issues that we're seeing and especially some of these hotspots. And therefore, you know, I think we all agree that we need to start thinking and working towards other solutions. So on the capital side, we've, in the last couple of years, had a couple other areas where we're looking at urgent capacity or capacity-related solutions that we've started planning on. And this is just a recommendation from MSD to create a project specifically focused on an area on the east side where we've seen a recurring and widespread sewer backups. This includes Norwood, Hyde Park and Oakley. The project really, you know, by being at the planning stage, what we want to do is we want to look at the data we have and we want to consider solutions from the standpoint of increasing capacity with a capital improvement in those areas. This would really complement other capital projects that are underway to evaluate and, you know, and implement solutions such as Ludger Run, Mount Washington and various west-side neighborhoods. So there is a fact sheet, I think I have the page, and now I've forgotten, in the budget book on page 74, that just at a very high level explains what the $1 million would be used for that SBU mitigation study in 2021. Then quickly, you know, I've talked in prior years and I think, you know, we all know what asset management projects are, but I just want to reiterate what some of the information provided in the executive summary to the CIP book. Just to remind everyone that asset management projects, you know, this is really, we have a continuous need for, we have a need for continuous reinvestment in the sewer system. As you know, you know, we have sewers that are 100 and 200 years old. We have treatment plants that are 50, 60 years old and longer. And a lot of the equipment is really, you know, at replacement stage. So given that we manage assets over $15 billion, if you said that the annual reinvestment rate of 1%, which is a pretty accepted industry standard, we would be looking at $150 million annual capital budget just on asset management projects alone. We know we can't have that. We have our WIP obligations and we know that our, you know, our community has affordability constraints. So we have to, just like on the operating side, we really have to manage what we can do. And we've developed a comprehensive asset management system so that we can identify the risks and the highest needs in advance. And then really focus on those priorities and projects that would present, you know, any risk to public health or safety or environmental hazards. So as much as we want to avoid reactive work, you know, really just focusing on the rehabs that are of most importance and the most urgent priorities. And that's been the asset management approach. And again, MSD has invested in business tools and software tools to really streamline this because we are, you know, we're talking about over 3,000 miles of sewers and all of our pump stations and, you know, all these various components of our system, you know, to really have a CIP process that is looking forward and planning things proactively over the five-year period and beyond. So with that, just a couple of projects to mention. The solids facility for 2021, the solids facility at the Little Miami Waste Water Treatment Plant, we would, we've requested the design funding for that. This would be to replace the incinerator that was decommissioned six, seven years ago now. So we, you know, we do not have a solids management solution on the east side, and that's why we are hauling and disposing of a lot of that waste. This is a part of our district-wide solids master plan that, you know, the city and the county embarked on several years ago. And the solution for Little Miami is an anaerobic digester facility. So really, you know, getting that advanced in 2020 with the design, that project's ready to go and very much needed on the east side. The other is, we do have, we are moving forward with the other solids handling project here at Mill Creek, an odor control upgrades that includes, I don't have it pointing out, the digester covers. And so this is another key asset management project and priority for MSD. And the third bullet is missing something that was supposed to say sewer replacement and pump station eliminations. And that's just because this is, there's a wide variety of projects listed that fall into those categories. And again, that really goes to our asset management prioritization and identification of projects and priorities every year. Finally, just wanted to mention, you know, the capital allowances are four things like rehab and relining of sewers in the collection system tied to that condition assessment we were talking about on the operating side, really being able to proactively repair and rehab sewers that we know are in critical need before they become emergencies. We do also have allowances for those urgent repairs. And, you know, we requested that funding in line with years past in addition to an allowance to purchase small equipment as needed in our treatment plants. And finally, as mentioned, the CIP overview is going to be a little shorter today. Finally, I did want to mention that this year MSD, we did not, you know, share a recommended rate increase. I know that last year, we had conversations about this and that we also understand from the board's guidance earlier this year that the desire is to, you know, not have a rate increase again in 2021 as we continue to work through the Phase Two Consent Decree negotiations. MSD has been working on a preliminary rate analysis, however, and, you know, our concern is, whereas in the last couple of years, we had requested a small rate increase, really to manage the increases in operating costs and cost of inflation, you know, something like a 1 or 2% going another year without any even modest increase to keep up with those cost of inflation could put us in a tough spot in another year. And meaning we would have to have a more significant increase to the rates. So again, understand, you know, the uncertainty of the consent decree program and where we are at. But the, so MSD has not presented anything, but our recommendation would be consistent with prior years in having a modest rate increase in that regard. And with that, really, I didn't have anything else on the capital budget. And so happy to take questions.
Thanks, Diana. So related to your last item there. So I think we are all on the same page that we need to take ratepayer, you know, ratepayer's capacity as into the equation and make that our highest priority, but balance that out with the need for dollars to, you know, respond to the consent decree and keep up with the system through asset management. So I don't know that we so much disagree there, but until we do have agreement on what those projects are, it seems like, you know, we're in a bit of a holding pattern. So I don't think any of us are happy about that, but, you know, that's kind of where we are right now. So I just want to acknowledge that once we get agreement as to which projects should move forward when, I think at that point, it might make some sense to have that conversation about the rate increase that might be necessitated by the increase in projects. So one thing, again, just information for next time. You responded or talked about the SBU program. It's something that we're all keenly aware of because we get a lot of constituent complaints primarily about this program. So could you provide us an update? I saw that you've got the planning process in for the west side. Is that the Hyde Park area? So could you provide us an update? Uh, yeah, I, I saw that you've got the planning process in for the west side. Is that the Hyde Park area? Is that what you're referring to?
The, the east side, um, yes, is the Hyde Park area.
So you've got, yeah, you've got that extra million in there for the Hyde Park area. So would you provide us with an update on all of the other, um, SBU items that have come our way in the last few years related to Northside, related to Mount Washington, just so that we can get a better understanding of where we sit, um, on all of the SBU projects that, you know, you have talked about putting in some kind of preventive device to eliminate these overflows, um, just so we have some understanding of how these all fit together.
Yes, can we do that for next hearing? Is that what you?
Yeah, next, yeah, information for next year. Okay. Um, Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thank you, Madam President. Just one comment, and I want to go back to what, uh, Commissioner Parks mentioned, but, and you, and not now, but, um, when you look at the chart and you had, uh, labor allowances as part of the reasons for the increase, it's such a dramatic increase from 5 million to 16 million and then expected increase, uh, next year. And maybe I'm looking at it wrong, Diana, but you can of, of course correct me and you, you don't have to do it now, but I, I would like to know what percentage of staff are being paid through the operating budget and also being paid through the CIP bu- uh, budget. Are, are they one in the same for, for some of them? So I, I would like to see, see that. Those are not names, but positions maybe. Um, so that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. And Commissioner, can I piggyback on that for just one second? Cause just to be clear, uh, I was, i- it was a curiosity to me as well as I looked at that chart. So I, I wonder, uh, Diana, if, if the increase and on the capital side related to labor, is it follow, is it, is it shown then as a decrease on the personnel side, um, when it comes to the operating budget? I think that's kind of what we're curious to see is how these are balancing out. Okay. So Commissioner Parks?
Thank you. Um, so, so when you're talking about the east side, so it's not just Hyde Park, it's Norwood and Oakley, right?
Yes.
So, so how, how do you decide, um, what neighborhoods get what projects?
So, I mean, that's a good question. I, I, I just want to be clear. So, um, this is, uh, you know, have a project developed yet. We, what we know is that, um, we have these areas, um, and so that's one area. We have, um, Mount Washington was identified a few years ago, um, the west side areas where they are prone to sewer backups. You know, in, in their, their little, their clusters, and, and that's where we're really able to use the data, and, and get a better picture of those particular locations that, um, we believe need something, that we're not providing currently, um, you know, need either a capital project or, or some other, um, you know, prevention of the sewer backup. So, um, it is based on the, uh, the data, um, and the reports that we're receiving. Um, and then the other piece of it is, um, sometimes we will have storms, um, like we had in 2016 that, you know, we, we, we could never design a solution to that, you know, we just, you know, there's just, it's not possible, something like.
No.
And, um, I mean, I hope we're better prepared, but we, we couldn't manage all of that. Whereas the locations we're talking about for these studies, um, there's, we're seeing, um, sewer backups and problems in more, you know, ru- routine or, or, um, average rainfall, if you will. And that's why we're selecting those. So it's a combination of, of those things.
Um, so I'm wondering, you know, because we receive correspondence from, um, grassroots organizations and neighborhoods, and they all seem to be from the same area. I know that work has been performed in many of them. So that leads me to this question. Do we complete the project in that neighborhood before we move on?
I would like to think that, um, you know, we manage many projects at once. We really, you know, take the, certainly the, any of the capital projects take many years. And so, I don't want to take our eye off the projects that are currently underway or under investigation to do.
You know, I'm, I'm just bringing them up because, you know, just since I've been here, it's been like the same areas of, um, of an extraordinary amount of concern. And, you know, and of course we're concerned about our constituents and, um, you know, and, and everybody is important. Um, and so my, my concern and my question is, exactly what I just asked. That was my question. So I, I, I think that we might want to, um, you know, we can't, we can't be all places all of the time. And, uh, so I don't know. I, I think that I would just like to take a look at it and, and, and perhaps you too. You know, and, and so I'm thinking about those people down in Cumminsville, the people down in, uh, Northside, where that project, you know, called, you know, and, and I know that we have, um, if we're in negotiations with them, you know, with some of them. So that, you know, that's, that's just my question and my concern.
Yeah. So, yeah, again, Diana, let us, um, see the list of these projects that have been referred to by all three of us, so that we can understand the status report of all of them. There's another one, and I can't remember the name of it. Is it, um, is it Polk Run? Uh, there, there's another one where.
It's the Ludlow Run?
Ludlow Run, that's what it is. Uh, but we heard, we had a public hearing and we heard some testimony about that one too. So let's, let's, so that, to the benefit, uh, you know, because we're the ones that have to respond to the constituents. You know, let, let us see the status report for all those projects that have come to our attention over the past few years.
Yeah, before we think about approving the work.
Right. Okay. Very good. Is there anything else, commissioners? Oh, we need to go to public comments. Uh, so Bridget, um, again, going to rely on you. If there are folks that would like to speak to either the MSD operating budget or the capital budget, please raise your hand and we will give you the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, first up, we have Tom Croft. He's had his hand raised. Tom, I've allowed you to speak. So if you could unmute on your end.
There we go.
Good afternoon, Tom.
Good afternoon to you all. So, um, let me begin, uh, because I want to keep it concise. As a member of the MSD Mill Creek Community Advisory Panel for the past six and a half years, I appreciate the progress that's been made on odor control. However, more needs to be done to assure achievement of the goal is zero for odor emissions. This is essential to the quality of life and economic vitality of our nearby neighborhoods, including Lower Price Hill, East Price Hill, South Fairmount, the West End and Queensgate. The goal is zero implies a more proactive stance. We urge the commissioners to move swiftly to approve projects that build redundancy and emergency capacity into systems that are critical to odor control. The need for redundancy is highlighted by the catastrophic failure of unit number one of the incinerators in 2017 and the subsequent shutdown of units two and three. More than 1,000 truckloads over, weighing over 15,000 wet tons had to be shipped offsite, creating significant odor issues. The three incinerators came online only 10 years ago and were state of the art. Their failure emphasizes the need to avoid overreliance on the limits, on technology at the limits of engineering estimates of capacity. Now only two incinerators are used at any one time, which is good because it allows maintenance downtime for a third incinerator. Nonetheless, during 2020, frequently only one incinerator has been available due to problems with sludge dewatering. These problems are being addressed. A BCE for a new dewatering building is being prepared for submission yet this month. This is one of the recommendations of the 2019 solids handling master plan. Please be on the lookout for that BCE and approve it when it comes to you. Another key element is the need for capacity to inventory sludge when we have a problem with some process component. Thank you for previously approving design of sludge storage, storage tank covers. We're pleased the construction is included in the 2021 CIP. At the same time, it's disappointing that another project is not in the budget. An improvement to allow the interchangeability of the centrifuges that feed the incinerators. There are six centrifuges with two currently dedicated to each of the three incinerators. Interchangeability will allow each centrifuge to service any of the incinerators. Investing in this kind of redundancy is essential to achieving the goal is zero. Please put this project in the 2021 CIP. Our neighborhoods have worked hard for economic revitalization and improved quality of life. Odors from the MSD Mill Creek remain a threat to our progress. The Mill Creek Plant processes over 70% of Hamilton County's wastewater. The goal is zero is essential to our ability to attract and retain residents and businesses. This is simply a matter of social and economic equity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, Diana, I don't know if you want to respond or, uh, because we, Tom, we have talked about some of the projects in Lower Price Hill in the past and how we're doing related to our zero tolerance for odors down in that neighborhood and beyond. So, uh, Diana, I don't know if you have a comment to that or if we can make sure that we have a conversation in between now and the next, um, hearing.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. And, um, yeah, we, I think it would be easier to have a conversation and address it the next hearing only because there were multiple issues. Um, uh, if, if Chief Engineer Ryan Welsh wants to comment, he would probably be better equipped on that particular, um, issue with respect to, um, the last item mentioned, um, with the centrifuges and the item that's not included in the budget.
Hi, Ryan. Hi, uh, I could address the, the request to add a project in 2021 to replace the dewatering centrifuges. That's not in the budget request. We have a credit project that has been approved by the board, was approved 2020. It's the, um, Mill Creek Dewatering Odor Control Quad Squ- Quad Scrubber Replacement Project. That's currently being designed. Um, it will be constructed in 2022. Being designed and planned such that it will, um, facilitate the construction of a new dewatering facility in a few years. And I think we have design of a new dewatering facility in the, the final out year of the CIP book, 2025. And when that project does happen, it's a very large project, I think $75 million construction for that future project. So we do agree that it's needed. But some things have to happen first. That's where it is in the schedule.
Thank you. Thanks, Ryan. Um, thank you. Uh, I see there's a comment in the chat. How is MSD addressing the funding for regulatory compliance monitoring in the budget presented? So I don't know who would like to take that que- or Bridget, I don't know if this person has their hand raised.
They do. Kenneth Beach, uh, you have been unmuted on my end if you'd like to address the board.
Kenneth, the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Thank you. Won't take me anywhere near that long. Um, looking through the budget as presented to the board, we were trying to pass where the, um, compliance monitoring respect to the consent decree is funded. And we couldn't quite figure, because it was never really spoken to. So we wondered whether Ms. Christie or anyone else can speak to that. Thank you.
Okay. Diana?
Um, well, he, he did say, um, with respect to the consent decree. So, um, you know, I, obviously, um, regulatory compliance is, um, part of our standard operations and permits for our treatment plants. And that is part of our operating budget, um, in, in terms of, um, you know, the, the day-to-day, uh, monitoring and, and reporting that we do. If, if he's asking specifically about, um, uh, the, um, the improvements that were constructed, for example, in, in phase one of the consent decree. So any project that was constructed, whether or not it's, you know, how it's performing, um, and achieving the goals of the consent decree, um, we have a, um, it's a project, um, for post-construction monitoring. It is part of the CIP request. And I will pull up the, um, actual name and number unless Ryan knows it offhand. I believe he's referring more to, to the capital, I'm sorry, to the consent decree compliance monitoring and not our, you know, our, our standard permit compliance.
That is correct.
Okay.
I could add to that, Diana, if you'd like. Post-construction monitoring project in the cons- for the consent decree is specifically limited to the Lower Mill Creek remedie. Um, the other projects will be post-construction monitored after the whole program. But also I'll just, uh, say that every so often, um, you know, we, we comply with a consent decree by completing quarterly reports, um, on all of the projects that we are, are doing. The regulators have full access to those reports. They are posted on our, um, our website as well. And, um, and the last, uh, full compliance audit that we had of you and from US EPA to Ohio EPA was, um, I believe it was, um, I believe it was 2017. And, um, that was a, you know, determination of full compliance with, uh, the consent decree, uh, from a compliance perspective. And, um, and those costs are captured, really, you know, they are kind of, you know, somewhat do straddle both, um, operating and capital because it's our, our staff and resources that are helping to ensure compliance of those projects.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I'm going to try to expedite some of this. Um, I apologize because we have a lot of people waiting evidently for the general fund, um, hearing that is upcoming. So, uh, I, Bridget, are, is it true that there's one more person to talk related to the MSD budget?
Uh, I believe so. Wanda Ball has her hand raised.
All right.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners and to Diana Christie. Um, I had put it in the chat, but in October, um, the mayor of Cincinnati, made the announcement that he would take surplus funds from Greater Cincinnati Waterworks. It was approved by city council and they would establish a forgiveness program on the water portion of the water bills for rate payers. Uh, I think there is some type of application process that needed to be done. But is it possible, since I see that there is, uh, surplus, there is an item that says, uh, cash surplus. Is it possible for the county and MSD to use their surplus, uh, cash to have a forgiveness program on the MSD portion of water bills, especially due to the pandemic and that a lot of our rate payers are unable to pay their, their bills, water and sewage? Can this be considered?
Thank you. And I just do want to say it was considered, uh, because we were trying to work with the city to try to get this accomplished. Uh, and I don't, uh, I don't pretend to know all the details, but Diana or Jeff, um, could you just respond quickly to this question?
Yeah, thank you, um, Madam President. I'm happy, happy to, just in, in a very basic level, the, um, the Ohio Revised Code, um, in the law around sewer rates in Ohio, specifically given that, um, MSD is a county sewer district, is a little bit different in what it allows, specifically allows in terms of our ability to use rate payer funds to offer, um, forgiveness of, of, uh, of, of, of rates and, uh, a reurages on rates. So unfortunately, we're not able to, to act in the exact same way that the city would be, which has the, uh, has Water Works controlled essentially through, uh, municipal home rule. Uh, so the revised code in Ohio prevents us from acting in that way. We'll continue to look at different options. Obviously, we've got the rate payer, um, the customer assistance program, et cetera, that we operate through MSD. We'll continue to look at options like that, but the, the specific question, we are unable to do exactly that in that, in the manner, in the manner requested.
Thank you. Um, all right. So I think that.
Madam President?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment about, uh, Mr. Croft's, um, and it was related that Ryan had indicated that, um, that was a viable strategy for the, uh, centrifuges to be entered. that was a viable strategy for the centrifuges to be interchangeable, but it's not in this budget. And so I would just ask that if I could ask what that would be for the next budget possibly, I would certainly appreciate that.
Very good.
All I have.
Okay. All right. Seeing no more folks to comment at this time. Remember, we've got one more of these next week, same time, same place. So thank you all for participating. And we will get more information from MSD for the hearing next week. We look forward to that and a continued discussion and feel free to, you know, tune in and weigh in next week as well. So thank you all. Thank you for being here. One, one last thing. I don't know if there's anyone from county administration that would like to weigh in at this point or wait till next week, but Holly is on. Holly, do you have any comment before we move on?
Good afternoon. I would say that the county team has reviewed, has reviewed the recommended operating budget and we are supportive of MSD's request. And we continue to work with MSD in review of the capital improvement plan. And we will have more information forthcoming.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, let's move on to our second hearing. This is the hearing to consider the 2021 Hamilton County General Fund Budget. Jeff Aludo, I believe you have a brief presentation for us to kind of level set the conversation related to our budget this year.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Do I need to close the hearing?
I would suggest that you close the hearing indicating when the next hearing will be and then formally open the, the budget hearing.
Very good. I am going to move that we close the hearing related to MSD's operating and capital budget to resume next week at 1:15 on Thursday.
Second. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Well, then, in that case, I will formally open. We, I know this was slated on our calendar for 1:15. We're running a little late. Given the previous conversation, but I, so for which I apologize. But let's open the hearing then. Michael, we're just going to open the hearing for the operating budget. So Jeff.
Yes, Madam President. So I am going to share my screen here. And I'll walk through a, just a brief overview. This is a, this will be essentially the same background information that I gave on the general fund budget back when I introduced the budget a few weeks ago. So I'll walk through this quickly so we can get to Commissioner comments and, and public comments. So bear with me for a second here.
I had to plug my computer in. I'm running out of juice. I so wish we could be doing these in person, but it is just not possible.
Okay, so Commissioners, are you able to see?
Yes.
The presentation?
Yes.
Yes, I can see it.
Okay. So I'm just going to, I'm going to walk through it in, in, in this mode if I can. Just, I'm not, I'm going to keep it at a presentation mode to avoid any, any complications with the technology here. And if someone happens to look ahead on the side, I'm not overly concerned about that. So, so again, this is the, the Administrator's Recommended General Fund Budget for 2021. Just a little bit of background on the general fund budget. The general fund is the primary operating fund of the county. It supports all of the mandated and policy-driven functions of the county. It has to be balanced. We have to pass a balanced budget on, on an annual basis. It supports everything from our elections activities, our emergency communications, 911, the sheriff's office. It supports things such as the crime lab, the, the ministerial offices of the county, the important work of, of keeping property records through the recorder's office, the auditor's office, the county prosecutor. Almost all of our criminal justice and public safety functions are, are funded through the general fund budget. But while it incorporates a huge number of these important functions, I want to just make a note that, that a lot of the county's work extends into what we call the all-funds budget, which includes many of our restricted funds as well. So when we talk about the broader work plan of the county, that is comprised of the all-funds budget, which is just north of a billion dollars, roughly $1.3 billion. And that would include all of our, of our voted tax levies, job and family services, the MSD budget that you just, just heard about. And around 80 separate restricted funds that all make up the, the broader work of the county. But what we're focused on today is the general fund budget, which is the primary operating fund of the, of the county. When we got into the budget for 2021, we had several goals. One was to stabilize the financial condition of the county in the wake of COVID-19. We wanted to address the board's 2021, 2022 policy agenda, enhance many of our internal operating capabilities. The board is well aware of our, of our deferred capital maintenance on many of our, many of our our buildings and the infrastructure of the counties. We wanted to make sure that we were providing for prudent infrastructure investment. We also wanted to address, address human capital as well. In terms of stabilizing our financial condition, the budget is in fact balanced at $290.7 million. This is an increase of roughly $13.8 million from 2020. And as the board is aware, this incorporates the additional half year of the quarter cent sales tax that rolled off from Union Terminal. So during 2020, we had that quarter cent sales tax went into effect, but we only received half of the, half of the revenue or a half a year's worth of revenue in, in 2020. So 2021 will be the first year that we, that we received the full year of that quarter cent sales tax. We're projecting a fund balance of roughly $44.5 million or 16.1% of the 2020 budget. It was at $36 million at the end of 2019. So the good news is the budget is balanced and the budget is adding to our reserve fund in excess of the 15% recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. A little bit of information about our revenue. This just shows you our, our primary revenue source is sales tax, followed by service fees and property tax. Some of our revenue streams continue to be volatile. Our inner, our local government fund, you can see it $12.5 million. That is down significantly from where it was in the past, which really, it started around the time of the, of the financial downturn of 2009 through 2011 and really put us into a state of structurally unbalanced budgets, along with our interest, interest earnings reduction that happened around that same time as well. So thus necessitating revenue from other sources, which we are filling in with that additional quarter cent sales tax. In terms of expenditures, the, as I indicated a little bit earlier, the vast majority of our expenditures in the general fund are public safety and judicial, followed by general government, and then everything else is, is small by comparison. But again, 76 to 77% of our budget is criminal justice, public safety oriented. Couple of slides just to talk about the state of our budget over time. As the board is aware, going back a couple of years ago, we were looking at a significantly structurally imbalanced budget. And we had indicated that the trend was only going to get worse. And we had projected it would get worse. This, this particular graph that I'm showing right now is one that the board was, I had seen at times in the past, numerous times in the past. As we are now projecting over our five-year plan, we are structurally balanced under this plan. So this is one of the first times, one of the first times in, in the past decade that we are projecting a structurally balanced budget over our five-year forecast for the county general fund. Some of the strategies we've, we are using to stabilize that financial condition, obviously reducing requested departmental expenditures. That will, the, the dynamic between the, the county as the budgeting authority and the different departments and agencies of the county that carry out their statutory missions. The work between the budget office and those departments in reducing expenditures and placing downward pressure on expenditure requests will remain the, the primary tool that we have on, on an annual basis to keep our budget in line. And it, it should be. And living within the five-year plan that we've outlined, given the resources that we have, and, and only those resources is paramount to making sure that we maintain a balanced budget. We did this year use some of our CARES Act dollars to support some of our key public safety levy costs, where we saw levies that were a little bit out of balance, that had a, a public safety element to them. We used CARES Act, we're allowed by the, specifically by the CARES Act to support those levies so that we did not have to subsidize with general fund dollars. We also talked a little bit earlier about the general fund reserve, adding to that reserve, and also using some of the flexibility that we've established. And we'll learn more about this as we get through the end of the year and seeing exactly how we close out 2020. But to establish a budget stabilization fund, as it had once existed in the county's budget, we had to close that fund out during the Great Recession as we essentially needed every dollar to go towards general fund operations. But we want to reestablish that stabilization fund to take pressure off of the general fund reserve, either to support swings in other revenue, revenue sources, one-time expenditures that need to be absorbed, or even if we have restricted funds that need support. We want to keep that off of the back of the, of the primary general fund reserve wherever possible. In terms of addressing the board's policy agenda, I'm just going to hit on three areas real quick. The public safety aspect of the board's policy agenda, equity and inclusion, and community development and revitalization. In terms of public safety, this particular budget funds a significant suite of programming in terms of having a public safety model and, and providing the sheriff and the judiciary and the agencies that are dealing with this on the ground with the financial ability to promote a public safety model that supports diversion and reentry as opposed to simply incarceration. So everything from the build-out of our 90-bed treatment-oriented expansion of the Justice Center to the work of our community alternative sentencing center, expanding the use of remote monitoring technologies through the Electronic Monitoring Unit Program, expanding our QRT operations in the county, a, a pilot program in Lincoln Heights to help reduce gun violence. A lot of innovative programming designed specifically around deflecting people around the criminal justice system as opposed to working directly through it. I also want to note, although it doesn't specifically fall into that vein, the budget does contemplate and facilitates the reduction of our 911 detail rate to $5. In total, that will complete the reduction we had from $16 a couple of years ago, and that will, on an annual basis, be saving our local political subdivisions over $3 million annually in their public safety budgets, which they can then use to put additional firefighters and police on the street as well as to invest in the capital equipment that they need to run their public safety operations. In terms of our equity and inclusion efforts, the budget, the recommended budget does contemplate and include the expansion of the Office of Inclusion and Diversity to focus on connecting county operations to marginalized populations in, in the county. So when we started our Office of Diversity and Inclusion, it was really focused through the first two years of operations on working internally within the county to support our procurement efforts and to support our hiring efforts, et cetera. So in particular, spurred by the work of the board and the resolution that declared racism a public health crisis in the county, one of the responses of the administration on, on that was to recommend the expansion of this office to make sure that we are using that office to work inside, outside the county organization, but in the community to make sure that all of our vulnerable and marginalized populations were connected to the broader work of the county and to make sure that every population in the community understood and had access to the services provided by its county government. I also want to focus on the work of the expansion or the creation of the Office of Family Voice, which is facilitated within this particular budget. That is a program that will be funded out of the general fund, but supported ultimately by, financially by Job and Family Services to help parents navigate the, what is a very complex child, children's services system that involves the criminal justice system, multiple nonprofit players, Job and Family Services Agency itself. And we wanted to follow on the best practices of other agencies throughout the state and the country to provide those parents who are really going through that system for the first time with, with a support system to help them navigate that complex system. We also are funding staff training efforts within Hamilton, the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. The board has talked about this multiple times in different staff meetings to make sure that our sheriff's office has the, the financial support to provide the training they need to ensure that all, all of the employees of the sheriff's office are in particular focused on an, from an active bystander, standard perspective to make sure that employees, if something is not going right within the operations at whatever, in whatever level that is, that they have the training on how to call that out to avoid some of the situations that we saw over the summer in other communities in, in the nation. I'm looking for the correct slide here. Sorry, Commissioners. Our community revitalization efforts, the budget supports really a significant increase in the partnership levels between the county and our local political subdivisions. The budget contains a $1.5 million grant program for community development and revitalization efforts, really focused on revitalization in our first ring suburban communities. And the way we had structured this in the budget and had talked about it in response to the board's policy agenda was that on an annual basis, the board would have the ability to target how those dollars are going to be used and for what purpose. Is it for blight remediation? Is it for, is it for specific economic development projects? Is it for affordable housing? What is it specifically that is on the board's policy radar that how we want to focus these dollars? Or to leave it more open to community application? But just wanted to highlight that that fund was designed to be flexible according to the specific revitalization needs of, of the community and the specific policy intent of the board. We've also included $2 million for site readiness activities. As in urban built-out county, we face a, a strong competitive challenge from some of our surrounding counties in terms of making sites, getting access to publicly available, publicly owned sites that we can use to leverage towards job-producing investments of firms that wish to locate or relocate to Hamilton County. So working with the Port Authority, we've established through this recommended budget, a $2 million fund for site readiness activities. We also have a staffing proposal in this recommended budget to bring someone on board to help coordinate all of our economic development activities to a greater level since we lost that capability a few years ago. I'm not going to go into a tremendous amount of detail on some of these internal operations. Suffice it to say that all of the items that I'm listing here, if people access our budget online through HamiltonCountyOhio.gov, all of these items are listed in the budget. All of the financial implications of these items are listed in the budget. In fact, I'll just make a plug now for if you're, if you do download the document, page 24 and 25 of the budget provides a list of all of the projections of the, of the budget from a revenue and expense perspective. And pages 31 through 35 have a very detailed summary of all of the departments and agencies funded out of the general fund and how those, how their funding is changing from year to year. That, one of the things we did want to hit through the budget though was enhancing our internal operations. So the budget does include a review of all of our county IT systems, enhancing our purchasing operations, the transition of our county email systems, the creation of a county grants office to make sure that we're leveraging outside funding sources. So we wanted to make sure that some of the things we had not had the ability to do in the past, that we are, that we're using some of our general fund resources to enhance and strengthen the internal fabric of the county organization. The board is well aware of our, of our public infrastructure, deferred maintenance and deferred capital investment in our public infrastructure and in particular our county buildings. So the budget includes 6.5 million for critical capital projects, including things like our Justice Center elevators, fire alarm systems in various buildings, 7.6 million dollars for energy conservation projects that, that, these are projects that are needed system improvements in our county buildings, but also come with, with energy conservation benefits. And we're backing those projects by the, we're financing them basically based upon the energy savings that they produce. And we, we also have around $2 million to address additional smaller-scale deferred maintenance needs. And finally, with especially unfortunately, as a result of COVID, we've now gotten into a completely different staffing model with many of our departments where we have many of our departments that have 80 to 100% of staff working routinely from home or otherwise working remotely. With that, many of our departments are seeing that this is really going to be a model that continues into the future. So we're going to resume our master planning efforts to determine where we might have the ability to defragment space, offload buildings from the county portfolio based upon the future staffing needs of, of many of our departments and agencies. From a human capital perspective, the budget does include a 3% wage adjustment. It includes a one-time payment to employees who were furloughed during 2020. It includes, and it includes in, in extent, the continuation of most of our other health benefits, our employee health clinic. And it also establishes a $50,000 fund for innovative employee development and training concepts. I wouldn't ever end a budget presentation without talking a little bit about the risks. There's risks in any budget while this budget, because of the roll-on of the quarter cent sales tax and the work of, of many of our departments and agencies, puts us on a much better path. There are some risks, the path of the pandemic and the economy being the biggest risk. We did not see as much of an impact in sales tax and some of our other revenues as we thought we were going, as we projected we were going to see in 2020. I think there were a lot of different macroeconomic reasons for that, which I won't go into right now, but the concern is, is that if things do not work out perfectly with the rollout of the vaccine and the recovery of the economy, that we could see a different type of economic drop-off next year that is not going to be so kind to county revenue streams. So we will continue monitoring that. We will always have departmental operating strains in terms of the mandated services required by county operations, the health of some of our restricted funds that may otherwise need support, and some of the compensation disparities that we see as we see employees leaving county, county employment for jobs in other counties, other public and private sector areas where we still see our overall compensation structure behind the marketplace by anywhere from 10 to 15%, sometimes even more depending upon the position. So all these are challenges. They're all addressed in some way within the budget itself, but there are risks that we must acknowledge nonetheless. So in summary, the budget is structurally balanced in 2021. We have a five-year sustainable path forward absent some of the risks that I just discussed. The fund balance is healthy and exceeds GFOA recommended standards. And the budget does allow us to sustainably make some investments to help improve the organization and the community. With that, commissioners, I'll end the presentation. I'll end the screen sharing and I will turn it over to you.
Thanks, Jeff. You know, all three of us have had the benefit of seeing this presentation before the staff meeting. So thank you for bringing the public in the loop up to speed on this budget that we're contemplating through, through the hearing. Commissioners, with your indulgence, I'd like to get to the speakers first because they've been waiting so long. So is that okay? I see two net head nod, so let's, let's do it. So Bridget, if people would please raise their hands and let us know who is ready to speak.
Thanks, Commissioner. Up first is Gina Marsh. She has her hand raised.
Good afternoon, Gina.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Gina Marsh, Executive Director of the Human Services Chamber. I'm here today to urge you to invest a portion of this year's general fund budget in human services. The county has historically not funded human services from their operating budget with the important exceptions of the Addiction Response Coalition and more recently, the, the Lead Pilot Program. We believe now is the time. The need for human services has grown over the past two decades, especially in areas of the county outside of the city of Cincinnati. I provided a presentation to you by email this morning with several maps that illustrate this unfortunate trend. WCPO recently reported that from 2000 to 2019, the number of people living below the poverty line decreased by 3% within the city of Cincinnati, but actually increased in the rest of Hamlin County by 74% during that same timeframe. Another study conducted by Elena Johns Wolf and Silverton City Manager Tom Carroll found that prior to the pandemic, 15 of the 33 first suburb communities had an eviction filing rate above the national average of 6%. And eight of those communities had eviction rates above 10% annually. This means that for every 100 occupied renter units, there were over 10 households who were evicted from their homes. As Hamlin County experiences improved financial health, we believe now is the time for the county to invest in supporting its greatest asset, which is its people. And one way the county can do this is by committing to fund a minimum percentage such as a 1.5% of the general fund toward human services each year. U.S. Commissioners can then decide which service areas to fund based on the highest priority needs, for example, housing or workforce supports or food insecurity. And we at the Human Services Chamber are willing to help in providing information on where these gaps in services exist. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Gina. There is something in the chat. Is Tom Carroll still with us, Bridget?
He is.
All right, then I'm not going to read it. Tom, I'm going to let you do it yourself.
I just want to say thank you for the help with the communications emergency. Very helpful. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for your very brief comments, Tom. And you know, I think we're all committed to the partnership. So thanks for being on. Bridget, are there any other folks to speak to the budget?
It does not look like anybody else has their hand raised at this time, so I'm going to say I think comments have concluded.
Oh my goodness, we lost some people, didn't we? Yeah, sorry about that. Hopefully we'll, we'll get to it more quickly. Maybe we'll flip them in our meeting. Oh, we have an evening meeting next time, so it'll be all about the budget. So hopefully people will have the opportunity next time to stick with us. So well, well, thank you to Gina and Tom for weighing in. Really appreciate it. That, so I'm not going to close this yet because we have, again, you know, seen this presentation. We've had an opportunity to look through the administrators or administrator's recommendation regarding next year's budget. So commissioners, we have an informal deadline of December 8th where we have asked if there are any additions, comments, deletions to the presentation that Jeff made. Please bring them forward and I will get something in writing by December 8th related to some of the things that I would like to just talk about in terms of this budget. So I've got a few things. I'm just going to go through them briefly today and then I will put something in writing and get a memo out to everyone and am hopeful that we will have, you know, the other two offices obviously weigh in as well. I don't know if you're prepared to do it today, but, and I'm not trying to put pressure on anyone, but I, I do have a couple of things that I just want the administration to contemplate as we move into the red, the final phases really of the budget process. So with your indulgence, I'm just going to run through them real quick and we'll put them in writing soon. So the idea related to the hero's pay for the folks that were furloughed, I, I think there should be some conversation about the employees that remained on the job and probably did more work because there were others that were furloughed. And so maybe some contemplation of whether or not they also should get some hero's pay. I'm not sure. I want to increase the amount of it so much as distribute it a little bit differently. So I, I offer that as a suggestion. I'm intrigued. Gina had sent this, the presentation that she made out, and I am intrigued by the idea of funding more by the way of human services in this budget. So Jeff, if you could provide us with a better understanding of what's already being funded related to housing, you know, domestic violence, food insecurity, give us a little bit of a crosswalk there. And then we can talk about how we might want to approach this budget and maybe allocate some additional dollars, especially towards housing, which is something that all three of us have been talking about. And I, I know there is a study that is contemplated for this coming year to figure out how we do that. But I just think we need to do more related to affordable housing throughout the county and maybe allocate some dollars against the reserve, knowing we may or may not spend them in the upcoming budget. That I, I've asked Jeff to think about FMLA. That was part of our policy document. And, and so asked that maybe Frank Spataro could put together summary of all the policies that we have related to leave and make sure that we're hitting the mark there. I am not familiar with all our leave policies, nor do I know how they stack up. And so I've asked him to do that in the context of maybe providing FLA, maybe not, but putting all that together. I've also would like to talk just a little bit more about a building inventory. We did a building inventory a few years ago. But I do wonder if we've got a lot of capital improvements coming up and I want to make sure that those are strategic. And we also look at selling assets that we might not need if we have the ability to consolidate our, our operations. In the budget, commissioners, you may have heard Jeff say that the expansion of the Justice Center is moving forward and the deputies are funded in this budget, but the treatment is not. And so I am wondering if we can't find dollars to fund the treatment side of that. I know there are some expectation or I guess maybe some hope that there could be some federal dollars or grant dollars available for this, which would be great because it would relieve us from that. But I would like to earmark some funding for that in the case that the grant dollars don't come through. And then lastly, I, we had an incident in Elmwood Place recently where a police officer pulled someone over and they don't have body cameras out in Elmwood Place, as is true of some of the outlawing jurisdictions that, you know, the sheriff has them, CPD has them, but some of the smaller police departments do not have them. And I think, and I've, I've asked a few of them, you know, would you be open to this? Like, you know, I think it's great for law enforcement. I think it's also great for the community. And there's the expense, of course, of buying the body cameras, but I think the data storage is the larger expense and it's an ongoing expense. But I do wonder if there is a potential partnership there where if we could provide some kind of match or, you know, I, I don't know how many communities would be even interested in this. But I, I think it's an important thing that we could do by way of criminal justice reform. And I'm wondering if we can kind of study that, maybe do an inventory of the communities that would want to participate. So we better understand how much money it would take to provide a match, but, but just kind of think through that and try to be helpful in that space. So that's what I've got. And I, and I, as I said, I will put that all in writing. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Vice President Summer Odomis.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to have a couple of comments and I'll save the rest for our next budget hearing, but our hero pay that we were talking about earlier, I'm not really here to say who worked harder and who didn't, but I do know that everybody was stretched, no matter what status you were in. So I agree with the one-time payment, but I would ask that the one-time payment, if at all possible, be done this year versus next year to compensate them during this time. So that would be my only request. In addition, I had talked maybe a year ago about the possibility of a satellite office out in the suburban area, outreaches of Cincinnati that would, would make it more available for those who don't have transportation. They could come to an office out in, in, I don't know, Wyoming, well, a little farther than Wyoming, I'm thinking, but maybe Forest Park, Mount Healthy, whatever, to access some of the services of the county. And I'm not just thinking about BMV things, but just a mini satellite office, even maybe even JFS office where people can come there. I know with the issue seven with the transportation or looking at more transportation, but just to allow accessibility to those out here who may not have the best transportation. I know Jeff had talked to me about it. And so as you say, Madam President, there may be some facilities that we can buy that will compensate for the leasing of another building out here or even maybe the purchase. But I wanted to bring that forward and the rest of my comments, I'll wait for the next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Parks?
Thank you. I just want to say that it's miraculous that this budget is balanced. And, and I give major kudos to the administration and our finance department. I have a lot of things to say, but I will say them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I was trying to keep it short, but when Commissioner Parks talked about miraculous, and so that was the part I cut out. But you're right, Commissioner Parks, it needs to be said now that this is not a small thing that Jeff and and his budget office did. I mean, they, and I won't go into it, but they just resumed, they restored things. They, there was innovation along with us, of course, but they worked so hard for new innovations and to be balanced, as you were saying, and the budget is increased and then we have more in our coffers for the rainy day.
Smart.
You opened it up. I just, just had to open it up. They just really did a good job. Agenda that we had too.
Hamilton County is blessed with smart people.
Yes.
That work for the county.
Yes, absolutely.
Agreed. Yes. All right, very good. Thank you to Jeff and John in particular.
Thank you. And, and I will just say very, very briefly that the budget that's before you is, is the culmination of the work of just a huge number of people. You know, the, the administration and the budget office, you know, I'll, I'll always tout John's strategic involvement with him. At, at the end of the day, he is the, the primary person associated with, with getting all this done, but you know, aside from that, there are so many people that are involved with bringing a, a budget to, to the board, the entire budget staff, all the department heads of the county, all the staff. Everybody in this county does something that contributes, contributes in some way, shape or form to our ability to put something in front of you that we think responds to your policy agenda and is the right thing for the taxpayers and the residents of Hamilton County. So I just want to thank, from John to everyone else, I just want to thank everybody, all the employees of, of the county for all their hard work to make this possible and the board to your, up for your, for your policy guidance and vision on this, because at the end of the day, we'd be, the, the budget would be really rudderless without the board telling us where to go with it. So thank you for your guidance and we'll, we will prepare some responses for, for questions that have been asked for the next hearing. And I believe we have the opportunity on the 8th and the 15th to discuss the budget and staff meeting as well. So we'll prepare for that discussion.
Yeah, Jeff, do remind us of the timeframes because, you know, the December 8th deadline is kind of an internal. So that is to hit the mark at a staff meeting, correct? So that we can have more conversation about some of the comments related to what the three of us are bringing forward.
Yes, absolutely. So yeah, the, the comments, we're, we're hoping to get those back by the 8th so that we could talk about those in staff meeting on the 8th. Then we follow that up with another formal budget hearing on the 10th. If we needed to, to have another staff meeting discussion on the 15th, just to resolve some If we needed to, to have another staff meeting discussion on the 15th, just to resolve some things before we ultimately pass the budget on the 17th.
Okay. So that's the timeframe. Very good. All right. Well, there we go Commissioners. The work is cut out for us. And, and you are all correct. And, and I do want to just recognize the partnerships amongst all the different departments. Because we, you know, Jeff, you, you noted it, but it really is important. All right. So I, I am going to move that we close the public hearing related to the 2021 Hamilton County General Fund Budget. We will resume the hearing at six o'clock next Thursday.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Odomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Let's go to the regular agenda items. The engineer has eight items. He's still here. Good afternoon Eric.
I am here, but for some reason that won't let me turn my video on. There we go.
There we go. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I have a number of items, but I'll be quick about them. First, I'd like to, I would like to state that there is a public hearing tonight being held for the Western Hills Viaduct between County Engineer's Office and the city of Cincinnati. That will be at six o'clock tonight. If anyone's interested, the city's website has the login information for that.
Eric, is, is that the city or the county?
That's the city. Yeah. Cincinnati's website has the login information. Will be televised on city cable. I think that's Biopics Channel 800 and Spectrum Channel 23. So beyond that, I won't give out all the web addresses because I'm sure I'll miss those out.
And Eric, you're participating in that?
Yes, I am.
Great.
So we will move on, move on to the items then. Item number one is a, an agreement with the sheriff's office to continue our cooperative agreement on commercial motor vehicle enforcement that we have had for, for a number of years with the sheriff's office. This is just a, the current one expires at the end of this year. This is a new one. Same format, same, same terms as, as the previous one, continuing that. Items two, three, and four are all approval of municipal road fund projects that were previously approved. The list was previously approved by the board. These are just the agreements with the communities to move forward on those. Item five, and I'm going to skip item seven are, are related. Item five is allowing, directing the county engineer to hold an annual meeting as is required in the code for us to have a meeting with township authorities and approving the payment and the cost for that. Item seven is allowing us to, per Attorney General opinion, to provide amenities for that meeting. And again, this is presuming that we're allowed to hold a meeting with COVID at this point. It will probably be a virtual meeting, so that will not apply, but we want to have that in force. Item number six is a resolution allowing the county engineer during 2021 to use force account to employ labor and purchase equipment materials to do force count, maintenance items, repair, construction of roads, bridges and culverts in Hamilton County. I would like to point out on the letter that was submitted to you, there's a typo. It has 2020 in the letter, but the resolution is correct. It is for 2021. And item number eight is a report to the board on the request for annexation from the city of Harrison. The, the, their plot or their just description is attached to the, to the board. I would ask that the clerk also attach the plat that has been previously submitted that goes along with the description. I'd be glad to answer any questions should you have any.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I have no questions.
No questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you Eric. And thank you for participating in the meeting tonight about the Viaduct. I think that'll be, yeah, great, great way to tell the public how we're still committed to the Western Hills Viaduct.
Just for your information, this is the fourth public hearing we've had on the project. So we have been holding public hearings since the early stages.
Very good.
Eric, how, and how, what is the response? How many people are there?
The ones we've held in person in the past, there's been between 50 and 100 people or more at the meetings. I'm hoping for a good turnout tonight with the virtual format, which would allow a lot more people access. So I'm hoping for a good turnout tonight.
I'll be there.
All right. Going to move that we approve of regular agenda items one through eight.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Odomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you Eric. Yes.
If I could, while we got, have Eric on the line real quick, just very, very briefly. I'm not sure if the board is entirely aware, but a, a frequent visitor from the engineer's office, I believe Mr. Bob Hightcamp retired on Friday. So I know all three commissioners know Bob and how well he served the, the county in the past. And I, he's not here to hear the comments, but I just wanted to acknowledge that Bob has, has retired, moved on to greener pastures. And I just wanted to, through Eric, thank Bob for, for his, his service to the county over the years.
Yes, Jeff, thank, thank you for reminding me of that. Bob did have 45 years of service to the county engineer's office. He will be missed and I hope he enjoys his retirement.
He deserves it. Oh my, oh, I wish we had known in advance. We would have, maybe we'll still put a resolution together.
A cake or something.
That's the unfortunate part with COVID is we really couldn't give them a good send off. So that is disappointing.
That is not a good send off. All right. We'll put something together. Thank you Eric. We'll reach out and make, make sure that happens. Thanks for reminding us. All right. The consent agenda consists of item nine through 26. Commissioners, any, anything related to these items?
Madam President, I have a question about item 19. Facilities and it indicates a resolution declaring that the county owned real property is no longer needed for public use and authorizing conveyance to Mr. Michael J. Ranch, Wrench, quit claim deed. So my question is normally would they auction that property? I was wondering how the process of Mr. Wrench receiving it. And so can somebody from facilities maybe answer that for me?
Yeah, I don't know if we have anyone from facilities on, but I think it was done through process, through sealed bid. And Jackie, I assume Mr. Wrench was the highest bidder on the, on the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So they're sealing bids and no, is there a possibility Jeff of continuing to do the online auctions or not? So more people can have an opportunity to, to bid on them?
It wasn't an auction. It wasn't, it wasn't an auction. It was a sealed bid. So they ran a legal ad and we asked for, we asked for the property, for people to bid on the property. And so they had sealed bids. So they sold it. It wasn't auctioned.
Okay. And so that's normally how it happens. Okay.
Well, in this instance, it is.
Oh, how does it normally happen Jackie?
Unless it's, you know, there's, there's, there's taxes owed or something of that nature. I don't think that they auction, they don't auction that kind of stuff off. Am I correct Jeff? I don't know of any county owned property that's auctioned.
Correct. So this would be if there was just a piece of property that we, that we have that we, that is no longer needed for a public purpose. And we just don't want it on our rolls anymore. I believe the ORC is pretty specific about sealed bids being required for that type of, of a situation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thanks. Commissioner Parks?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to move that we approve of consent agenda items nine through 26.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yeah.
Commissioner Summer Odomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
All right. Well, I do believe we've concluded our agenda. Commissioners, is there anything else that needs to come before the board?
I have nothing.
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you all. Thanks for the, to the general public for your patience. Appreciate your support. I'm going to move that we adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Odomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.